Okay. I want to bring to order the Berlin School Committee. And we've just finished our tour of Berlin Memorial School. Very nice job. Um, and the first thing we have on the agenda is introduction of new staff and professional status teachers. And I'm going to turn it over to Nadine.
Um, we have actually four new staff members who has uh. Uh, we have four new staff members um that I'd like to introduce to you.
To you. First, we have Julia Broadmarkel, who's our kindergarten teacher. She has a master's degree from Fitchburg State University. She received her initial license in early childhood and she came to us from Lunenburg Primary School, where she was a grade one tutor. And prior to that, she actually worked in Clinton Public Schools in the summer program as an ABA paraprofessional. How'd I do?
Wonder.
Okay, welcome. We also have Dixie Kane, who is our recess aid. She's a parent of a former BMS student. And she's also employed at Perkins School and has extensive in-service training, including CPR and first aid with adults and children. So, thank you Dixie.
Hi, thank you.
And Nicole Latino is also a recess aid and an office assistant. She's a parent of a student at BMS and has had experience working with children and in an office setting. She's not here tonight, okay. And Deborah Wheeler is a new kindergarten aide. She has subbed for us for both short and long term and over a period of several years. And most recently, she has served as a long-term sub in kindergarten. Thank you. Welcome to all four of you. And we also have two other recognitions this evening. And I wanted to recognize teachers that have been granted professional status. And what that means is teachers that have been here for three years. They go from non-professional status to professional status and they get, I feel that it's important to recognize those individuals as well. So first, we have Amanda Fallon, who's our reading specialist.
Hi.
And we have Dina Salamondias.
Salamondias.
Oh, close, right? Sorry, Dina. And she's our preschool teacher at Berlin Memorial School. So, congratulations to both of you for receiving your professional status.
Yeah, I want to welcome the newcomers and say thank you to those that are reaching their professional status.
And I, I do have to say that we did walk in some of your classrooms and they look great. So, it, it's a breath of fresh air to see the new beginnings in the schools and, and seeing all the kids doing their little work and seeing all the examples on the walls. It's nice to see.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Um, we are working on the approval payroll and payroll warrants. The next thing on the agenda is a consent agenda, which includes the minutes of August fifteenth, open session, and August sixteenth, open session. Um, do I hear a motion to approve?
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Anything to be said? Good, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Um, we had, I believe, two communications from scholarship recipients. They are thank, thank yous. One from Emily Anderson and one from Shannon Malloy for the scholarship money that they received from the Reed Tyler Scholarship Fund. And I wanted to acknowledge those, those letters. Um, petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda? Anything? Okay. Um, then we'll move on to the reports. Do we have a CPAC report? Not, not as yet, okay. Um, superintendent's report.
Um, just before I get into the superintendent's report, I just wanted to say that the CPAC is changing some of their meeting schedules because they originally had the fourth Tuesday of every month, but that conflicts with Boylston School Committee meeting. So there are some dates they cannot change, however, because um they had other outside agencies coming in to do presentations, but the ones that they can change, they are. So I'll also be announcing that at Boylston and the regional as well. But just so that you know, they are making an attempt to change whatever they can.
Okay, great.
Um, okay, so for my report, first of all, is the opening day enrollment. You received, I believe, in your packet, the enrollment as of this August twenty ninth, two thousand twelve. We have fourteen students enrolled in our preschool classroom. Um, that was, again, this is all effective August twenty ninth, so there could have been some changes since then. Um, but this was in regards to opening day. And the preschool students actually started on September fifth. In kindergarten, we have twenty seven students enrolled and they started on September fourth. In first grade, we have two classrooms that are sixteen students each for a total of thirty two students. And I just, I, I can also do a little comparison from last year at this time as well, if you'd like. Last year, we had nineteen. This year, we have thirty, thirty two in first grade. Uh, the second grade classroom, we have two classes of thirteen students each, which is twenty six students. Last year, we had thirty two. Um, in third grade, we have a seven, a classroom with seventeen students and a classroom with eighteen students. That brings us up to thirty five students and last year, we had thirty one. Um, in fourth grade, we had a classroom of eighteen students and a classroom of seventeen students. That brings us up to thirty five and last year, we were at twenty seven. And in grade five, we have a classroom of fifteen students and a classroom of fourteen students. That brings us to twenty nine and last year, we had twenty three. And in sixth grade, we have a classroom of twenty three students and last year, we had thirty four. So this year, our total is two hundred twenty one students. But last year, our total was two hundred sixteen students. So there's five more students. And again, that's in comparison from last year's first day to this year's first day. And those numbers change as we now.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the kindergarten last year numbers?
Yep, I'm sorry. Last year for kindergarten was thirty six. This year, it was twenty seven. And if you really want to look at it apples for apples, you'd look at last year's first grade, this year's second grade, last year's third grade, this year's fourth grade.
Some of them went up, some of them went down.
That's right.
Yeah.
So that's really the way you'd look at it, apples for apples. But looking at it in a total enrollment, that's what we, that's what we're seeing as a, as a change for this year. Um, also in regards to the building project update, um, they did meet this, this morning. Unfortunately, I was not able to go. Um, I had a Mars meeting this morning. But I can tell you that still, they're running right on time with everything. We're right now at the point where the building principal has given the staff, at their staff meeting yesterday, an overall outline plan of the moving process. And they've developed, they're developing a building, um, moving committee within the building, um, with the teachers so that they can try to determine what needs need to be met for each department as well as individual teachers. Some classrooms will need more support than others in that move process due to, again, like for example, the science labs and so forth have a lot of various, um, equipment and chemicals that need to be moved very cautiously. Uh, but the building project itself has been going very well. The IT procurement, um, we met, I think it was last Wednesday that I met with them. Um, and we went over all of the IT pieces and, and how to get those, um, their timeline. They're hoping to have everything done by November thirtieth with the IT equipment, which is great news. Um, the IT procurement that was approved, the one, there's one section of it that's on hold and that's in regards to, um, the laptops and the iPads and so forth. That was part of the plan. Um, Dean Paulino, who's the, the chairperson of the, of the group, uh, of the committee and myself, we have determined that we want to reassess, um, the needs for the classrooms. We'd like to see more one-on-one, more hands-on, more iPads, uh, for the students. So there's a lot more interaction going on in the classrooms. So that piece, we're, we're holding back. But in regards to all of the others, the, um, the classrooms are all getting finalized with their paints. And the, um, science labs, they've been working on finishing up all of the, the final lab tables. So everything's really looking exciting and, and great. It's really, really coming together nicely. The pavement outside has been, um, worked on right now. It's, it's getting worked on with all the curbs and all the curbing. They did the lines for the students and the staff for different colors so that the students know where they can park and the staff know where they can park. Um, so yeah, it's, it's nice. It's, it's tight quarters right now in the parking space so they don't have many, um, spots for spares. But it's been, it's been still smoothly. We had the police officers there the very first day to make sure that people were going the one-way direction because that was a change and that went really smoothly. So, they've had a nice smooth transition with that.
Good.
And that's it for me.
Okay. Nadine, I know we didn't put this on the agenda, but can you introduce our new staff that's at the table with you?
Oh, of course, of course. I'd be happy to. We have Karen Molnar is our new director of pupil and personnel services. It's sitting right next to me. And you've been here since August first, is that right?
Right about then, right.
And then we have Kami Lamica, our new director of finance and operations, who's been here since August thirteenth, that Monday. And we all know Carol. So yes.
An old woman staff here. Welcome. All right, and the next thing on our agenda is the director of financial services report. Kami?
I just wanted to, um, bring you up to date on the facilities for Berlin. Um, there've been a number of projects that were in the works before I started. Um, so I'm just catching up to date with what's started happening and what needs to be done going forward. Um, it was a project for the intercommon clocks to be installed. So that was underway and it's pretty much done. Just getting to the finishing touches of that. Um, we also had contracted with a consulting company to prepare a roof survey report for us in the condition of the roof. Um, so that ser, uh, report has been come in. Um, so we're in the process of reviewing it now, see what next steps will be with that. Um, the next item that for Berlin was also the boiler replace, replacement repair. Um, and going through some of the history of the report, I'm still going through some of what has been done to date. Um, where do we need to go from here? One of the items that we did come across was the question of the water. Um, so we've contacted a water testing company to see if they would be able to do that testing for us and provide us the information we need. So I'm in conversations with that company as well, getting that underway. And then we'll go from there and see where we can go with the boiler after that. And I'm also in touch with, um, the energy committee in Berlin town as far as, um, any conservation measures we can do with the grant as well.
Okay. Is there, is there something that maybe the committee needs to do before a September date? Is there something?
I know.
I was hearing little bits and pieces.
I had left a message. I spoke with, um, actually Nadine spoke with Judy Boomen.
Oh Judy Boomen.
So I, I left a message for today to give me a call back. Um, because I believe there's a September date that she needs some information about the project itself. So I'm getting in touch with her about that.
Okay. Okay.
And see what she needs.
Right. I thought there was something.
Her biggest question she had when I spoke to her, it was, um, the fact that we had a roof repair report completed. And the, um, energy grant that we have, they, they have to fund, so much of it has to be into the schools as part of the grant. And there were seven different jobs there. One of them was part of the, um, not the curtain, I'm losing.
Building envelope?
Thank you. The building envelope. Thank you Belle. Um, but the building envelope and they want to, um, invest in that. And she, her question was, if they do do that investment, is that going to counteract any of the work that we have to do in regards to the roof? So Kami and I did a quick glance at it and looked at it. From what we see, we don't see it contradicting at all. But, um, we definitely want, you know, a facilities person to confirm that, um, for us. So, um, I know that, I, I referred Judy to Kami and I gave Kami Judy's information so they were coming in contact. But we, as a school committee, you don't need to be doing.
We don't need to vote anything in particular before that date? Because I was thinking if we did, maybe we could do it before the region meeting or something.
Yeah, I don't see where you'd have to vote on it because really, it's just a proposal that they have to submit by September twenty first. Any final things, then you would do the vote. They, they just have to submit it at this point.
Okay, great. Sounds good.
And that's all I have on my report.
Okay, thank you. Um, principals report. Carol?
Before I begin my report, I want to take a moment to thank all of my staff members who are here tonight um, for coming out to be recognized and just to come to hear the meeting. Um, it's, you know, we just had a staff meeting this afternoon, so it was a late afternoon and they went home and they came back. And I just want them to know, I appreciate you being here this evening because they give a lot of time already, but they're giving time from their families tonight to, to be here. So thanks to everybody who's in the back row there and in the back rows.
You know where they sat in the classroom.
The other folks I'd like to thank and one, one of those peoples here, Maureen Norvold and the group from Link and other parent volunteers whose names I'm trying to put together right now for coming out over the weekend and last night and spreading the bark mulch, hauling the piles of bark mulch and getting that out. It's, it's a time, you know, it's, it's so labor-intensive to get that done. And, um, they just got out there with the pitchforks and shovels and everything and got that mulch down. And I think it just speaks to the community, our school community, the parents who are involved, the staff who is in the back there doing the same thing. So I just, again, I appreciate all of that on behalf of our children. I mean, it's, not only looks nice back there, but it's a safer place for them to play. So, it just was a great thing. So, again, thanks to all those folks who volunteered and I'll catch up with your names. Um, as I said, I'm trying to put the list together now, so.
And I, I think it looks great.
It does, yeah.
And we just toured the building. It looks great.
Mm-hmm.
It really does.
So I wanted to just update you on our work with positive behavioral interventions and supports. It's initiative that we, that took place, um, the year before, before last year, toward the end of the year, we decided as a part of the wellness committee that we would pursue that as our social curriculum piece. Last year, I had a committee together and we met monthly to, to discuss what, the, what direction we wanted to see our school go in. We put together a behavior matrix and the matrix really reflects positive expectations of, of students of all grade levels in all areas of the building, including the classroom. Although we've left space for, for classroom for students and teachers to create their own rules and sense of community in that particular classroom. But we came to agreement that these were the expectations that we would follow for the school. I know the teachers have been talking with their students about those expectations and reviewing the matrix this year with them. And I think we've gotten off to a really po, positive start with this. Um, we're very committed to our core values, respect ourselves, respect others, and respect the environment. We have another, number of initiatives taking place this year. We have, um, Sarah Richards is committed to doing all school meetings once a month that we'll, we'll, we'll come together as a community and, um, work on some of our issues that we have around bullying. Um, and also just in general, celebrate our, uh, the positive things about our school community. We're doing student of the month and recognizing individual students in each grade level who have, um, demonstrated their, their commitment to the core values each month in their classrooms and around the school building. And I think just overall, we're just really trying to, um, approach our expectations with children by explaining to them what they are, um, modeling that behavior for them and then holding them accountable as well for upholding those expectations. We have a system in place for, um, discipline referrals at this point that's very concrete and involves different levels of, of behavior and how we address that behavior. And, and a system that will also involve, you know, parents as well. I, I did talk with the Link, uh, folks about that at our first, uh, meeting, uh, last week and showed them the matrix and also forms that may come home so that they knew, uh, you know, what to be, what was expected ahead of time. And also, I hope to reach out to parents at our open house, which is Thursday, September twenty seventh, from six thirty to eight fifteen. So I'm going to try to reach, yeah, a larger population. I know we did have a chance to present at the bus meeting last year as well. So I'm hoping to get as many parents as possible aware of what we're doing. So, so that's PBIS. Um, and the other piece, um, one more thing I'm, we're hoping to add through grant is a tracking system. A program called SWISS, which is directly connected to the PBIS program, is a data tracking system where I can collect information and, um, put it into the computer and I will get graphs about specific areas of behavior that, that show up, patterns of behavior that we're seeing, um, that will come through and that we can talk about as a staff and work on in the future. And it also gives me a chance, because of all the anti-bullying mandates, of logging that information in a, in a much more effective and efficient manner, I guess, um, rather than paper and pencil all the time, which is getting very antiquated very quickly for, and cumbersome because I end up with stacks of books and I prefer to enter everything electronically, so.
SWISS, is that, what does that stand for? Just curious.
I don't know. Information, and it's an information systems, I'm imagining, but I.
It's a student-wide information system, I think is what it is.
Thank you.
Student-wide information system.
I think it's student-wide information systems. I think that's what it stands for.
And you can go on to look at it, W W W dot S W I S dot com. Along with our open house, I wanted to mention that the sixth grade is going to Nature's Classroom next week. So they're heading up on Monday. They'll be back on Friday. And we hope they get as nice of weather as they had, we had this week for that trip. And also to mention that Link Inc. is ho, hosting, uh, an event for families at, um, Shartner, Shartner Farm. And that is Friday, September twenty eighth. And it's a, um, a maze, a corn maze, uh, hayrides and just a lot of evening activities with flashlights and all kinds of fun things and goodies, right? And so just a fun get-together for the family, so everybody's invited.
Ruth, it's right on the B, Bolton-Berlin border on Peach Hill, Peach Hill Road.
Right.
You go to the, right, so.
So can I just, I just want to correct you on one thing. It's W W W dot SWISS, which is S W I S dot org, not dot com.
Dot org, so.
And it's school-wide information system.
Mm-hmm.
Just in case you want to look at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does it track anything else besides behav, it just sounds like it does more than just, um, track behavioral situation? Just out of curiosity.
Well, it can also process, it also can look at different processes for individual support systems that you're trying to put into place, but it does model off of the PBIS programming that we do. So it can show you, you know, if an intervention is working or not working or if you need to change. That's how they document. So it is a behavioral piece, but it can also show you, um, by doing different interventions, what that be, how that behavior's decreasing and is it working or not. Um, so it, and it can be just for positive, not just the negative behaviors either, so.
Sounds interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, Seth, Carol?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the business items. Uh, voting delegate for MASC, MASSS Conference in November. Are you going?
I'm not sure, yeah.
Okay. I got, I signed up and you're not going.
You're not going?
Yeah.
I guess then we should probably vote you as the delegate.
Yes.
Just in case.
Have to save that.
Okay, you want to be the alternate?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess we need a motion to.
Um, motion to nominate Chris Keith as the delegate to the, um,
The conference.
The conference in November.
Can I second it?
Okay. Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
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 And I'll make a motion to nominate Ruth as the alternate for the conference as the voting delegate.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, release of the executive session minutes from March of nineteen ninety six to March, uh, to November of nineteen ninety eight. Um, I had looked, it was just a very few minutes that I had looked at. Mike read, I believe, up to ninety six and passed ninety eight to now. And we voted those, to release those. For some reason, there was a gap, so I looked at those with Cheryl one day and, um, I think we m, may have redacted one name and after that, I think they were a go. So, um, do I hear a motion to release the executive session minutes from March of ninety six to November of nineteen ninety eight?
It's a moment.
Can I second it?
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. And schedule for the October meeting.
So I've asked that, um, we put this on the agenda and that the October meeting is a date to be determined. I would, I would just throw out a recommendation to the school committee that maybe have it the first, um, week in October. The reason being, the second week of October, I am out of the country, so I won't be here for that meeting and. So the first week, I don't see that we would need a first meeting for the first week for the region. And that's usually kind of our.
Right.
You know, so I don't see a need for that. Um, so that would give you an option of keeping it, still on a Tuesday night and just having it the week prior. So that would just be my recommendation.
So what, what would the date be for?
October second, I think.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
Let me just double check.
It's fine with me.
It works for me too. That's good for you? That's Tuesday, October second, right?
And I think that according to the school committee, meeting dates on yours, I believe that was the only one that we had a conflicting date with for the year.
I, I think so. Okay. So we don't need to vote for that, do we?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
No, we can just say we're going to switch the October one to the first Tuesday.
Okay. All right. Um, public, uh, or school committee comments? Okay.
Can I just, um, embarrass someone?
Sure.
I really want to thank Maureen Norvold, who's here today in that corner. She's been Link's.
You want to embarrass her?
Well, you know, I realized after the last Link meeting that I didn't thank her, but for the past three years, she's been president of Link, which is the kind of PTO organization for BMS. And she's had such a laid-back, warm style. It's been, it's just been really great having her as president. So I just wanted to appreciate how much we appreciated her years of service in that position.
Um, I did have, let me see if I can find it. I did attend the financial advisory committee meeting this morning. Um, just, um, as an aside, there will be fireworks apparently in Berlin, I believe, down the south common, October thirteenth, with the rain date of October twentieth. This is to wrap up the, um. The two-hundredth birthday? So I think, and it'll start around seven with possibly food and that kind of thing. So if people are interested, keep your ears open. Um, let's see if there was anything.
The rain date is the thirty, is the twentieth, you said?
Twenty, mm-hmm. Um, and I also wanted to, to let you know that there is, they did have a discussion last night about a special town meeting. Um, it, it's sort of tentatively been suggested that they have December third.
I did get another notice today that they're saying maybe November twenty eighth.
Oh, okay. Well then. It'll be the end there of November or the first of December.
Right.
So we, you probably got the email about the time we were chatting about it. But anyway, it's good to hear that at least there is a discussion and there will most likely be a special town meeting that we can use to put, um, you know, the article on the warrant for bringing sixth grade up.
That'll be great. Can I just build off of that? I did see Christine Lynch, um, today and after the, at the end of the meeting, of the Mars meeting, I did talk with her a little bit. Um, she did explain to me that although the attorney has not yet looked at the paperwork, um, that she does feel that that is all that will be required at this point in time. I asked her if there was something afterwards, if that would delay any of our transitioning in the fall. And she did not foresee that being an issue, provided that both towns were actively trying to pursue it. And I think for anybody who's listening to under. And I think for anybody who's listening to understand why we're really requesting this special town meeting, I think that's important to just say if I can. The current amendment that was done in November of two thousand nine stated that upon the opening of the new high school, middle school, that the sixth grade would be moving up as part of the region. Well, the school is opening in January, so there's no way any of us want the students, the sixth graders, to move up in January. So we need the Berlin Town to have a special town meeting to hold the specific date to say effective July first so that we can do the appropriate planning for our students and our staff and, and the community in getting them up there. And also, it also will assist with our state funding allocations as well, to make sure that it's all planned and in place. And that has to be voted on and approved before December thirty-first so that it impacts the appropriate fiscal year for FY fourteen, which is for clarity.
All we're really doing is adding that particular date.
Just a date. We're not changing anything to the amendment, but that date.
It's already been voted that sixth grade is going up.
It is happening.
And we just need the date for Department of Services, I mean, you know, reasons.
That is correct. So the amendments already stated that they are changing, but it says effective of the opening of the school. And we don't want that to happen.
Okay.
So.
All right. Let's see. Future agenda items. Most likely, we'll put the bus brochure on next month. We'll be talking about that at the region first. And I had talked to Nadine about putting the MASC resolutions on the October agenda. Or I also had suggested, you know, maybe we do the Boylston, the Berlin and the region meeting to talk about it all at once so we don't have to talk about it three times.
Yep.
So that, I mean, so it may happen at the region. I don't think we have need for an executive session.
No.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion we adjourn the meeting with no need for executive session.
Second.
All right, all, all in favor?
It's a record. So we might get better attendance.